Things already present in Froome, what they needed more than something new in the mix was promotion. And then a kind of cohesive, something that brought them all together in a sense, that actually painted the picture of them as an economy, not just as individual projects. So, so that was, that was our initial event back in November last year. Next slide please. So flash forward sort of eight months later. I think a really core kind of outcome that, that, that we've managed to create or start to create. So this, this is the leaflet, I'll get on to that in a moment. What we wanted to put forward was this idea that Froome can have its own vision for a circular economy. So the, the broader idea of what a circular economy is from a technical standpoint, which is in essence to eliminate waste and pollution, protect nature and keep resources cycling at the local level. And that's kind of the, the broader systemic idea, but what we wanted to kind of put across is Froome circular economy can be unique and it needs to be a reflection of Froome itself. So when we were doing this project and you can see it within the leaflets that are on some of the tables, we split it into five broad categories. So those broad categories were growing, sharing, repairing, reusing and reimagining. So they're all somewhat self-explanatory. So growing obviously is just quite fundamental to any community. We felt it was important that that got enough attention. So there's growing, obviously you all know what sharing is, don't need me to explain that. But sharing beyond kind of Sesame Street values, there's something kind of deeper and more profound as to what sharing can actually bring to a community. Now, I don't know the, the details of this, but I have a friend who works in this field of what's known as the gift economy. So she works with indigenous communities around the world, specifically communities where their, their whole economic basis is based on sharing essentially. No exchange of money, there's no, if something needs something, it's given to them. So if someone has something, they give it to the person who needs it and their whole economy operates like that. And I'm not saying we should do that. But it's interesting that, you know, that can be an aspect of Froome's economy. And we, we're already starting to do that. We have the share boxes and the share shop and there's kind of the, the use of the word sharing, you know, it's, it's starting to, to, to be more and more present. But it's just that idea that actually economies can be quite radically different from, from what we're currently doing. So yeah, within sharing is also this idea of the gift economy. Obviously repairing, so that's trying to encourage people to move away from the kind of throwaway culture that we've kind of ended up with. Returning kind of to the way like our grandparents and great parents would have done things, which is just don't throw it away, fix it in essence. Reusing is, is, is the next section. Similar to repairing in a sense, but, but what's encapsulated with reusing things is this idea of upcycling. So a really amazing business that we featured in our organisation that's in the leaflet is called the Scaf Shop in Froome. And they take reclaimed scaffold boards and turn them into like beautiful, functional, kind of sleek office items and furniture essentially. But yeah, they're fantastic. And then finally, the one that really kind of that I pushed for and, and think is essential is this idea of reimagining. And it's this aspect that we're bringing in that I think could make Froome circular economy or the, the vision that we eventually kind of co-create for an alternative economy together. I think reimagining is really special because it, it opens up the idea of what a resource actually is. You know, any act of change is an act of imagining, you know, all of the, the four previous ones require creativity, require imagination. So I think what we were trying to communicate with this is recognising that imagination is in fact a resource. And you could argue that it's the most primary resource that we have. You know, moving into kind of an ever-increasing world of complexity and the, the multiple crises that we are faced with, whether it's the environmental crisis or the cost of living crisis, you know, you name it. We require creative thinking to kind of be like, how can our systems be better? How can our services be better? How can this community work together in a more complete way? So that's what reimagining is trying to incorporate and you, you can see some of the examples in the leaflet. And one that isn't in the leaflet that I really love is the Good Heart, you know, an example of, of kindness, the wellbeing economy. That's an example of completely reimagining, you know, what if we had an economy based on kindness and based on wellbeing? So that's, that's those five broad categories that, that we've put forward that are by no means fixed, but just the, the start or something. So we produced 10,000 beautiful leaflets, as you can see, all on recycled paper. So that's that one and it's, it's on the, the tables as well. So, so that was, that was one of the outcomes that went to the majority of houses in Froome and was distributed by the Froome Times. The directory on the Froome Town. Site as well. And then finally, next slide please, Laura. There we are. So that's our back. So that's our magnificent banner, which is down at Badcocks. That's what it is. I think it's really great. I've had loads of positive, positive feedback from people. It really brightens up that space. But yeah, I mean, in regards to this banner, obviously it's kind of, it's, it's cool and it's interesting and it helps, helps promote the project. But I think the kind of, the, the slightly deeper reasons for why we've added this up there. You know, it's an incredibly visible place and, you know, I think the artwork itself is quite impactful. And artwork like that at that scale does have an impact on people. You know, gets them asking questions, you know, what is that? Why is that there? You know, following the link, okay, you're starting to understand the circular economy. And in essence, I think what it's doing is, you know, it's in such a visible place that everyone is, is seeing this image and this symbol. And it's kind of creating a shared experience in the town. And the reason why this is important, and I will read this from the paper, why, so why I think this is important, is to create lasting systemic change in Froome. We don't only require new initiatives and systems, although this is essential. We also need Froome residents to have a shared understanding of things like circular economy, as well as, as well as a sense of pride, ownership and active participation. Through this, our collective awareness as a town around issues like regenerative economics will strengthen and can in time become the norm. So I think that's what this could do perhaps, other than it just being quite lovely. So that's that. And then finally, what's next for Keep It Froome? So we hope to use what we've done as a platform to build upon Froome circular economy. We hope to continue to tell the story of Froome circular economy and generate real ways in which people can participate in that. We've got talks with the Ship Pub to have a permanent mural of, of this image on their wall. So that's quite exciting. And there's some other interesting things like potentially a circular pop-up shop in one of the banks and maybe a shared online platform for people to circulate resources locally. So there's a whole plethora of things that we're looking into doing to build on the work that we've already done. So thank you for listening.
Thank you, Ben. That was really illuminating. We had this as an extra adjunct to this evening's meeting, so we could do the formal stuff without Ben having to opt out of the meeting. And before we start the meeting proper, I just have, oh, any questions? Yes, of course, any questions? Any questions for Ben? You were obviously very thorough and clear. Thank you. So thanks for coming tonight. This is a meeting of Froome Town Council. I'm clearly not Philip Campania says here that I am, but I'm not, but I'm very happy to be here again this evening and chairing this evening's meeting. Just to remind everyone, we have people online as well as here in the room. For those of us here in the room, some very basic housekeeping, emergency exit is there. The assembly point is in the far side of the car park. The toilets are at the end of the corridor on this floor and there's an accessible toilet to the right of the lift out there. Tea, coffee and water over in the corner if you're feeling parched because it's quite hot. Laura, Sarah and Rachel are managing the minutes and the question board and the IT generally. We are being recorded and we're being live streamed and Becca as well is helping out tonight. Thank you, Becca. For anyone attending via Zoom, can you please use your yellow hand to suggest that you have a question? And for everyone who's not on Zoom, just use your actual hand. And we have some apologies for absence. Oh, okay. No one proposed me to be chair in the meeting, so can someone do that? Lisa, thanks. Seconded by Mark, thanks. Everyone okay with that? Carried by Polly. That's great. Everyone's happy. Thank you. Apologies from Carla, Philip, Anita, Andy, Nick and Mel. So all that's recorded and I think that's it before we can start, is it? Can someone propose we accept those apologies? Thanks, Anne. Can someone second that? Polly, thank you. Can everyone agree that that's okay? That's unanimous. Brilliant. So moving on then from Ben's lovely talk, we're going to have a presentation from Keep It Froome. That was the Keep It Froome presentation. Can you do it again, please? But no. So moving on, we are on to questions and comments, approval of the minutes from the last meeting of the 17th of May, 2023. Are there any questions about those minutes, Fiona? Okay, brilliant. Can someone suggest that we accept those? Thank you, Lisa, seconded by Steve. Everyone okay with that? Brilliant. Any declarations of interest? No, we're good there too. So we are on to question, agenda item three already. That's questions and comments from the public and councillors, including Somerset councillors. And Dawn, it's nice to see you here. Do you have a update or a little report for us?
So you've got my report, so I'm not really going to talk much about anything else. But if you can support Froome Chamber of Commerce, they're running an event in July with a Somerset chamber at Standwick Market. So it'd be great if you wanted to go to the business breakfast and just support small business. And then I just have two questions. One is about the dogs on the leads or not in Victoria Park. It feels like some people are and some people aren't. And I thought the rules were from eight till six. In the summer months, the dogs were on leads, but people are just doing their own thing. So I was just curious about that. And then the other thing, I just wanted to find out about the tourist information centre and what's happening with that. Because I believe there's some changes ahead.
Right, right up there. I'm sure Rachel will be able to cover the point. The rules haven't changed in Victoria Park, but it sounds as though we need to re-emphasise them. Yep. And you're doing the Victoria, the TIC one.
Oh, yeah. But also just to update that we have just redone the signs in Victoria Park around the dog, dogs on leads. I think it's 10 o'clock until 6:30. So in the morning, dogs run out off lead because I think that was a conversation that was had with the dog walkers at the time. And then hopefully in prime picnic time, dogs are definitely on the leads. But we have just redone the signs and hopefully they should have gone up. Well, I think they went up last week, but I can check that for you. Yeah. Yeah, you've got until 10 o'clock in the morning.
Just to add, I asked Rob about this because I, I think they have just gone up. So the signs have just been renewed, but they were not very visible before then. So I think that's when there was quite a number of incidents, or a few incidents.
And first then, Lisa.
It's not about dog walking, it's a separate question.
We'll come back to it then. Lisa.
Just with regards to the dog walking, as the signs have just been up, can we put something out on social media?
Of course.
Like maybe a dog eating a ham sandwich in a park?
Okay. I mean, normally we, yeah.
On a skateboard.
Yeah. My, my question is, is, is probably for Dawn because you're here from Somerset Council. I went to the SANG meeting, Fairframe SANG meeting, the Service Users Networking Group. I can never remember what SANG stands for. But a topic that came up was with the move to the Somerset Unitary Authority, there seems to be some difference in the way council tax is discounted. So some legacy benefits that used to allow people to get a discount of 80% are now not allowing people to get a hundred percent discount that, that Somerset is giving. So some people are losing out in that. And I know it will all settle down, but at the moment there are a lot of people in great difficulty with council tax.
Thank you. What I'll, I'll do is I'll investigate that and I'll go back to you, Anne, because I'm not quite sure. I thought it was supposed to be a hundred percent and that was going to kick in straight away in April, but that hasn't.
Well, well, I think it, it may have kicked in a hundred percent for some people on some benefits, but not all of the benefits that people used to get a discount for with Mendip, are they getting that discount with Somerset?
Lovely. Thank you. I'll sort that. We minute that. So there's an answer at the, as soon as we possibly can. I'll come back to you, sir. Rachel?
Yes, just to answer your question about the TIC. Yes, changes are afoot. Black Swan have decided that they are going to have the round tower back and use it for a different. Well, they're not quite sure what they're using it for, but they've given us notice till the end of August. So we've been looking along with the volunteers around what options we have and where we can go, where we might play. So we're still in the process of looking at that at the moment. Once we have some firm answers, then we will put some suggestions into the ring. And then I'm assuming we'll bring them back here for councillor, councillor approval.
And some lively debate.
Yeah. Yes, certainly the volunteers have lots of good ideas and are, you know, really helping us pursue those and work up the case for, for, you know, different positions around the town.
Thanks, Rachel. I'm going to go to the gentleman behind you first. Yeah, Julian, yeah.
Meadow the other day, and this is following on from Victoria Park. Dogs are galloping through rotten meadow all the time. So I don't know whether they're allowed to or not. They're off their leads. But the, the concern that I had, and I wrote an email to Friends of the River Froome, but it got bounced back. Obviously their email box is full. But there was a group of young people having a barbecue in rotten meadow last week. And the next day I went back and there were two large burn holes in the meadow. I don't know if that is of any interest to the town council and have they got any ideas about that?
It absolutely is because it's not on, it's not allowed and it's very destructive. And I don't know what our position, I know our position is that it's not allowed, but Rachel, I'm sure you'll be able to illuminate us a bit on how we can enforce that or.
I need to say that from a comms perspective, we're encouraging people to have fires in the, in the fire pit, rather than throughout the meadow. So.
And again, as much comms as we can do on that, the better. Lisa, hang on, Fiona first then, Liz.
I'm just wondering for the general public if we could just be clear about where those fire pits are?
Yeah. I don't think your microphone is turned on. Yeah, no, I absolutely agree. What do we do? Yeah.
I mean, there, there, there are fire pit areas which we try to encourage people to use. And there's undoubtedly a fire risk about random, particularly in this weather, sort of random barbecues being there. The, the, the challenge we have, other than putting signage up that will be removed just through a vandalism point of view, is policing that and enforcing it. It's, um, what we, we do try to put the signs up and they're very regularly taken down and we keep replacing them. So it's, it's, it's a tough job to enforce that kind of thing, but you're absolutely right, it's not on.
And I think in a way it's on all of us to kind of tackle it when we see it. I know it's hard. I've been there myself and I've seen people having fires and I haven't wanted to go and say, but I think we kind of have to, don't we? Rach?
Just to say, there's a question from Lenka online.
Lenka online.
Hello?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Can you hear me? Okay, cool. Basically, actually Anne, Anne, I came to the meeting, but Anne Hills has actually already raised the issue. So now I'm glad she has and I'm just reiterating, that's why I joined. So Dawn, if you could possibly email Fairframe regarding the matter of the council tax. Because we, it's affecting some people. They've had a 40% increase in their council tax. So it's obviously affected a lot of people. So can that be minuted please as well?
Yeah, we got that. Lenka, yeah. Rachel, did you want to say something else there? No. Fiona?
Yeah, I just wanted to highlight that obviously we're, well, we are in the middle of Great Big Green Week. There's lots of amazing activities going on and thank you to all the staff who are involved in kind of pulling that together. Rachel and the comms team and then Nikki and the resilience team. And also just to give everyone a heads up that we are having what will hopefully be quite a good meeting around the town's response to the climate crisis and biodiversity breakdown on the 19th of July at the football club, starting at 6:30. Light food, light meal will be provided, as I've just read. If you need any extra enticement to come along. But yeah, it'd be lovely to see as many people there as possible. Everyone is invited and yeah, it's looking at what all of us are doing across the town to tackle the climate emergency.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from councillors or staff or residents? Okay, that's brilliant. Moving swiftly through, Max, you might have been more on target than you thought. Agenda item number four, the process for community grants 2023-24. And I believe that's Lisa to talk on this one.
Is everybody okay if I'm here presenting it rather than up at the podium? This is a recommendation to move the grants group into a committee. We met as a group, oh, about three weeks ago and looked at the process and felt it would be better served by being a committee, open to the public, inviting those who are applying for funding to come in, discuss it and being open and transparent about the process by which we select people to give grants to.
That sounds very good.
Thank you very much. And I believe there are two recommendations with this. Does anybody have any questions?
The, it's just, it's more about the wording, but if ever, if other people are going to pull me up, I'll, I'll pull myself up. It's just more about the wording than anything. The bit around organisations being non-political, non-profit-making, individuals not be funded. I think that we do, but I think one of the most powerful things we can do is pay people who are doing amazing work to do amazing work. So I don't know whether we just want to clarify that bit. I'm presuming it means that, that people can put in for the cost of their time. But maybe we could sort of clarify the wording on that bit a bit more and make it clear. Because I think it's really important that people feel that they can put in for the cost of their time. Perhaps even suggesting a certain, you know, amount per hour or something that is kind of applicable for a community thing as a sort of guide and just make it really clear. Because I just think it's really important that we are, I think we should be funding people.
Are you happy to, to work on that language with me, Fiona?
Or someone from the grants committee, but otherwise, I mean, I am happy to, but it probably is more appropriate if it's someone from the grants.
You're good with words.
As a starter, why don't you go and have a chat about where that's going to go and we'll go from there?
Perfect.
Do we look at the recommendations? Sorry, Max?
I don't think we can pay people.
Put in, surely we can put in for the cost of someone's time.
Oh, yeah. So that's different. So I thought you were talking about giving grants to individuals.
No. But because we say we don't give grants to individuals, I think it makes it a bit unclear as to whether people could put in for the cost of their time. And I'm saying we should make it clear that they can do that.
Within the projects. Pardon? Within the project.
Within the projects. I'm not saying we should be like, you know, like Joe can put in and be like, I need £500 to repair my roof. I'm not saying that. Like.
You'd always pay people, you would always pay people through the organisation.
Yeah, through the funding process.
Just the language, I think is unclear. That's what I'm getting at.
Both happy with that? We can take that? Okay. Okay, Max?
So for the, do I say the recommendations? Okay. Two recommendations on this. One, for the council to give the creation of a new grants committee. And two, for the mayor Philip Campania to be the chair. We have discussed this with him. He is aware of this. We are not stitching him up here.
What a shame. We shouldn't have told him. We'll take these as one, we'll take this as one recommendation to vote on. So I can have a proposer Fiona and a seconder Steve. So I can have a proposer, Fiona, and a seconder, Steve, and everyone in favour. Yep, it is.
Yeah, I just want to make sure we've got a minute right to make sure we can amend some of the terms and conditions. So it's terms and conditions. At what point, Fiona, you're just questioning that we just to talk about? Give me a sec.
Or F on the terms of conditions. It's just that line, individuals not be funded, I just think gives a wrong impression.
Okay, so it's in four F, the terms. That's really good. So we can put a sort of agreed subject to minor amendments to four F. That's, I just want to make the minute correct.
Yes, go ahead.
That's a question I should have asked a second ago. You're saying the chair being the mayor. Is that the chair being the mayor every year, whoever the mayor is? Or that just this year will be the mayor who is Philip Campania? Is the chair of the committee always going to be the mayor or is it going to be?
We are recommending that it is the mayor going forward.
Every year.
Yeah.
Yep, fine.
I think that really makes sense because the mayor is so involved in making those decisions anyway. So I think it makes sense as a process. Everyone okay with that? Okay. Any more questions on that? Stop giggling, Steve. Okay, so agenda item five. An update on the programme in the council plan on reducing poverty, including the refugee hub and community building in the town. I think Anne, you're going to start with this one.
I'm going to start and then very quickly hand over. I've got a very few slides, so I am going to stand up here. You will all have read the paper, but just in case you haven't or just as a reminder of what you will have read within the paper. The paper talks about really the approach that Froome Town Council has taken over a number of years in community development. And this is looking particularly at two strands of deprivation. The acute problem of the cost of living crisis, but also the chronic problem of deprivation within the town. We have made steps to tackle the cost of living crisis and we'll see in the table there are some actions that we've marked as green because we feel we've completed them. There are other actions that are ongoing to do with the cost of living crisis, but also the chronic problem of deprivation. We haven't fixed that. We probably will never be able to fix that. But the steps that we are taking to work towards improving those circumstances are obviously ongoing. So two strands. The way we have been working as a town council, as a convenor, a facilitator, an enabler of community groups and individuals within the town, helping people to help themselves. So working with voluntary groups, community groups, faith groups, social enterprise groups within the town. A process of facilitation and enabling. Next slide, please. So the first step was to map existing assets within the town, existing services within the town. Who's doing what in this space? Where are the gaps? Are there any gaps? Who would be best placed to fill those gaps? Can we encourage a community group to fill that gap? How are they resourced in order to fill that gap? Are there additional services, facilities that we need to commission or encourage a community group to take on? So that's the mapping exercise. So coordinating, facilitating the filling of those gaps. The whole thrust of our work is to stop our residents reaching crisis point. Kate, in the past, Kate Hellard, has talked about the idea of sheep falling in the river upstream and someone pulling them out of the river downstream. Rather than us constantly pulling sheep out of the river downstream, it's much better to fix the fence upstream and stop the sheep falling in the river. That's the analogy. Okay, so we're working before the residents of Froome reach crisis point rather than fixing the problem, which is so much more difficult to fix once they've reached crisis point. There was a huge amount of learning from the COVID pandemic. We have a very agile town council. So we were able to pivot their work at the beginning of lockdown in order to be able to serve the residents of Froome and help them through that process. And our learnings from the work that we did during the COVID pandemic are applicable to the cost of living crisis. So all of our learnings from each new emergency that arises assists us in our community development work. So lots of learnings from the COVID pandemic. We were able to deliver projects to support residents to mitigate the impacts of the cost of living crisis. So take the learnings from that and apply them to the cost of living crisis and whatever next crisis comes along to hit us. Next slide, please. We work with our community rather than doing things to the residents of Froome or even for the residents of Froome. It's much better if we do things with the residents of Froome. Eventually, if we can enable the residents of Froome to do that work for themselves, then we can make us all redundant and we can all go home. So we look at what assets there are in the town. And we're not just talking about physical assets. We're talking about people and relationships and community groups. And those are the assets within the town. All with the idea that we're encouraging our residents to be more resilient against whatever crisis next comes along. And now I'm going to hand over to Nikki. No. I'm going to hand over to Hannah, who's going to talk about some of the work that she's been doing in. Oh, if we go back through the chart, this is what I was talking about. Some of the items, it's in the paper, but there's the table of the strands of work, the items that we feel have been completed, so marked as green, and the yellow ones that are still ongoing. So I'm going to hand over to Hannah, but I'll be back to answer questions or deflect questions to other people in a moment.
Hello, can I stay here? Great. Hi, thanks for having me. So if you don't know me, I think everybody knows me, maybe not Julia. I'm a project officer in the communities team. And so I support all community building activity in Froome, particularly on the street and neighbourhood level. And as Anne said, using a strengths-based and participatory approach where it's appropriate. So essentially, it's that bottom up rather than top down. Thinking about, you know, how can we know what's important to people if we haven't listened? And how can meaningful, desired change happen if it isn't rooted in the community in the first place? So the work I've been doing in St John's was an opportunity to work in an area that we didn't already know much about. For whatever reason, we hadn't heard from any neighbourhood groups in the area and there was no obvious community events happening. And it was hard to tell if people there have a sense of agency and connection, whether they want one. So this work also came about as the cost of living crisis was hitting. And the available data also told us that there were struggles for people here in terms of poverty and other vulnerabilities. I think, next slide. So, yes, so with any engagement in any of our areas of work, it's important to be asking the right questions and these are the ones that I task myself with discovering in this neighbourhood. And so you'll notice that they're rooted in a strengths-based approach. So rather than what's wrong, it's what's strong here in the first place, not what's missing, what's here? What are you working with? What have you got here already? And avoiding that, what can we do for you? It's, you know, what do you want to do? And do you need anything to help make that happen? What do you love here? That was the first screen with the board that we did at one of the events. And the next slide, some of the examples of the things that I, we did. So it's important to use a variety of different things. So to get a range of voices. People, you can't really do one or two things because not everybody will come to your event or, you know. There's positives and negatives to each of these. Door knocking is great, but it's really time consuming. I think I've knocked on every door in St John's and had some really valuable conversations, not with every door. Because not all of them opened, obviously. But I've had some really valuable, in-depth conversations with people that would never have come to anything that, you know, I would have put on. And also signposted those who wanted to to be involved. And bus stops are a good captive audience. They're waiting for their bus. And then it's also, it's good to try things. So I started a coffee morning in the football club, thinking it would be a great place, you know, in a neighbourhood that was lacking a community space for people to come to. But it didn't end up being appropriate for that particular neighbourhood, like for its much broader reach as a venue. So I knocked it on the head, but it was worth a try. And then engaging with the other stakeholders in the area was really important. And I found it really beneficial in this area for lots of reasons. So there are shop owners, social housing officers and the football club. And as we got to know the people in the area, that kind of became clear that the shops on the Rodden Road end of the neighbourhood, I should have put a map on it anyway. But they're a kind of pseudo-community hub for the people that live there. So there's a corner shop, a barber, a chip shop and a beauty salon. And everyone who owns those businesses and works there have got really good relationships with the people that live there. There's like a noticeable affection and support between them. There's loads of small examples, but when Nikki and I were there last week, Sam at the shop was just on his way to go and visit one of the regular customers of his because they'd had a bereavement in the family. And, you know, you could see that that was, there was a strong network there. And because I spent time building relationships with them, that meant that they were happy to have me there and able to kind of promote what we were doing to the people that trust them and know them well, too. So we had a great turnout. We did a pop-up event outside the chip shop and we organised it together with them. So rather than us rocking up with all our stuff and vegan curry, we organised, we chose a day that was, it was a Thursday night because the hairdressers in the barber shop opened late that night. And we used the chip shop to do the catering. And so people knew about it. We had people coming because they'd heard about it already. And Queenie at the chip shop was running around, helping us move trestle tables and handing out free ice cream. And she was, I think she was totally bemused by what we were trying to do there, but she was really happy to get stuck in. So the next slide, please, I think, is what I found out. So there's lots of detail in the report of some of the main things. And these are, I think, the biggest headlines for me was the lack of social and community space was an obvious one. And like I said, obviously, the shops kind of serve something around that, but, you know, not exactly. And maybe in the future, the football club may become a venue that is more, of more use to the community. Also, the play park and the field attached to it are actually, by report, much better used than I anticipated they would be. So people were very positive about those spaces. The, so tackling the cost of living crisis, there was a bit of negativity around replicating some of the initiatives that have happened more centrally, so like share boxes and community fridges. Some people, you know, the fair Froome offer wasn't appropriate for some families. I spoke to a parent of six children and three of them are neurodiverse and had specific food issues. And, you know, and actually her angle was I wouldn't want to take the food from someone else that would need it more. And so, and then there was a few people that, someone used the phrase, that green stuff is snobby. And so it felt, they felt quite separate from the kind of, you know, some of the other initiatives that happen in town. So the other thing, it's a really rich and diverse community that live there. I think in the very short space of time that I've been spending there, I've met people from Romania and India and Pakistan and Barbados and South Africa and China. And there's a really big, like a disproportionately high, like a high proportion of settled travellers. And some people, I went in, having spoken to some of the like housing officers who mentioned that there was a sense of division around that, but actually being on the ground and seeing what was happening in front of us told a bit of a different story. There's a lot more affection and respect between the communities that we witnessed there. Obviously, there's lots of different things that go on. But, and there's a lot of people there that have lived there all their lives, lots of people that have come back who used to live there as children and everything in between. And I think the most important thing that came, that I'm sort of coming out with is that there's a real desire to increase connection here. Either in their immediate neighbourhood streets or in the wider neighbourhood. Everyone loved having the tables and chairs outside the shop and having that opportunity to come together. Coming out to litter pick. And I think really being given the space to say what's important to them. Like I said, Queenie thinks we're bonkers, but actually it's really obvious that people are appreciating that as a town council, we're wanting to know what is important to people and making the effort to come and find out. So next steps, I think there's one more slide. Is, so we're at the stage where we've got to know some key people and some key themes. So it's really continuing to build those relationships and follow the energy and support projects as they take shape. So the litter pick that we did last week was, came out of the chip shop event. So Nikki and I spoke to a lot of people that talked about their sense of pride in the place, going downhill and people that were very vocal about saying they'd want to come and join in, although the turnout was smaller than. But actually, the people that were there were really key, active people who also kind of echoed some enthusiasm that had already happened about maybe beginning a community garden in the area as a place for people to connect and grow food together. We've actually just put in a joint funding bid with Loop Froome and gardening together to fund that infrastructure. And because I've got the relationship with the Astor Housing Officer, they are also positive about it and up for us using the land, the Astor-owned land to do it. And then, so those are some of the other things that have come up in conversations, jumbled trails. There's no notice board in the area. The people that came to the litter pick were like, let's do this regularly. And then a lot of people were interested in either street parties on their street or around the back of the shops, there's a space that people are interested in having a kind of celebration event. And, yeah, and as these things happen, there's more engagement throughout that process. So that will feed back in, so in a bit of a cyclical fashion. And as more residents are pulled into doing things and feeling like they've got more agency in effecting change together in their locality, we can step back and go somewhere else. I think that's it.
That's brilliant, Hannah. Thank you. That was really interesting. Really good work. Really good work. Are there any questions first of all for Anne? Steve? Oh, okay. For Anne, first of all, just, we're going to do them separately. Questions for Anne, Lisa?
I just wanted to say how lovely it was to hear about all the work that was happening in there. And it was just really heartwarming to hear about the community engagement and the difference it's making to that community. So thank you, Hannah.
Well, any questions, Steve? Did you have?
Yeah. Thanks, Hannah. Just on the door-to-door stuff that you did, just as a ballpark, what would you say the sort of percentage of engagement that you got from knocking on doors was?
In terms of percentage of the people that live there?
Yeah, that actually would engage with you, actually have a conversation with you.
I've got numbers somewhere, but I think it's.
Just ballpark. I mean, we're talking 25, 50, 75%.
I've had about 45 in-depth conversations and about 20. But this is, I'd have to like add up the hours that is spent.
Yeah, from how many houses would that have been approximately?
Going to say 250 doors.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's not bad.
It's a guess. I can find out.
About fifth of households really engaged with that.
Yeah.
That's, that's very good, actually, isn't it?
And this was during the day and over quite, you know, over sort of three months of like two hours, you know, little sessions, little bursts.
Right. Thanks. Interesting. Thank you.
And did you have something you wanted to add to that?
Only that, before we move to the recommendations and the only thing we need to vote on is to continue our support for the refugees. And the only thing we need to vote on is to continue our support for the refugee hub. So, if anyone has any questions particularly about that, before we move to the recommendation.
In the report, it says their connections are very dependent on personal mobility. And I was just wondering about, I'm trying to now bring back the Elsie Whip because part of that was also obviously looking at the, like how accessible all the streets are and that's the local cycling and walking infrastructure plan. And I'm trying to dredge it up from the back of my memory, but I'm fairly certain one of the routes goes out that way. And I was just wondering whether there was any feedback on the accessibility of the routes into town.
Specifically from St John's?
Yeah.
What I found in terms of people that struggle with accessibility was that there... I didn't ask that specific question, but also people that were active were very happy with the connectivity in terms of bus routes. And it was more the people that were confined to wheelchairs or had carers. So, I don't know, actually, is the short answer. But it's, people were, when we talked about, oh, would it help if something was more local? There was a general murmuring, but they wouldn't even go to the shop because it's, you know, really challenging for them. So, they would be driven or rely on carers to be taking them to places.
Yeah, so I think that's something probably to think about in terms of our garden as well, in that case, in terms of the accessibility of it. From memory, it's flat.
It's flat, but the paths are very narrow and wobbly. So, there is an easier access point from the top near the football.
Yeah.
We're going to have to look at that, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Rachel?
Lenka has a question.
Lenka?
Hi, yeah, it wasn't a question, it was just to add to the presentation there about the St John's area. That is probably, that's our second largest area that we serve our clients to access all our services. So, we do do a number of deliveries to the St John's area, fair Froom. And we do find the thing that people like the most is probably food at five. And also, we offer the hot meal now alongside Purple Earth's holiday activities. So, because we use, we've used Hayesdown School, we've used the cricket club and we use the football club now. That is, I think families are coming more to those sort of community places and having, accessing food that way. And also, just to mention, we have previously used Roddenbury Close Community Rooms. I don't know if that might be an option, that's quite a good space outside as well. So, I just wanted to add that.
Yeah, thank you. I, yeah, I know the Roddenbury Road venue and it's a reasonably sized room. There was a little bit of internal politics with the local residents about outsiders coming in to use that spot. So, it might need a bit of work, but certainly one worth looking into.
Fiona?
Refugees bit of it, is that right?
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
Do we know how many displaced people there are in Froom currently?
Yeah, we've got the numbers here. So, we've got 56 families on the Homes for Ukraine scene. And then we've got another six families that are from places other than Ukraine, so Syria, Eritrea, Pakistan.
150 to 200, roughly.
Sorry, come again.
In terms of people, I mean...
Number of people, hold on.
Yeah, about 100. No? Any other questions for Nikki or Anne, Max?
Bits on your thing was about the work between Somerset County Council and the NHS and the establishment of a community hub and all of that kind of stuff. I know that the NHS own what was Shoe Zone and we're intending to do something with that at some point. I know that Somerset are having thoughts about it. I've realised, I remember that one of our kind of goals was to hopefully get them to work together. I know it's a bit revolutionary, but that might be a good idea. I was wondering, so I'm a bit out of touch with all of that. Have you got any information on what's happening?
I have no further information on that, other than we're still trying to get them to work together. I don't, did we, did we write to the NHS? I'm sure we did, but whether we ever got a meaningful answer? Does, does anyone in the room want to comment on the situation with the old Shoe Zone shop?
Specifically on the Shoe Zone store, the last we heard, and I don't know the latest as of today, but it was being advertised on the sort of the Public Assets for Sale Register. But that was quite a few months ago now. We'll try and find out the sort of the latest on that.
So, you mean the NHS is trying to sell it?
Yes.
Good.
They bought it sort of in the hope that it was going to be the ideal place for an NHS hub. And it turned out not to be. Yeah. What we are trying to do is, and I was sitting in a meeting with Kate and Melody today with the Dalton Child Social Services Commissioners, who are also working with the ICG about trying much more to sort of have this kind of signposting place, a community hub of sorts. And they're beginning to sort of draw those strands together. But one of the things I found really interesting, because I sort of dipped my toe in it for the first time today, was the amazing number of different people commissioning so many different services and trying to draw those, as you know, Max, trying to draw those together is really hard. But we were giving them a kind of a local solution, as sort of, if there is something we can do on a, at a local level, at least as a point of contact that comes with some of those services. And I think we, you know, we made some really good progress today with them on that.
Lisa?
I just want to refer back to something that you said before about the football club. So, that sits kind of within that area, doesn't it? I'm wondering if that's a site that might be able to be able to be used for more community benefit? I mean, we're on the eve of purchasing it as a council and it seems like it might be a good venue.
Yes. I, so the only reason I stopped the coffee mornings was because my focus of work was in a very small section of the community. And I was, and actually, if anything, it was looking like it might become more popular for a wider audience. And I didn't want to spend time doing that because it would distract things. But the, but in the short time that I was there, there were people that were interested in starting clubs up there. And there, you know, it had obvious appeal for being a community venue that would service, and actually, you know, the whole of that side of town struggles for community spaces. So, I think it would be a welcome venue.
I just wanted to sort of end with something if anyone, no one else has got any more questions? So, it might be why just to sort of say at this point, at this area work, that Kate Haldard's given a notice and she's off. And she's probably going to actually leave in practice, probably towards the end of July. Formally at the end of August, but she's got lots of holiday to take. So, for the record, if you like.
Thanks for that bombshell. Any other questions for Nikki?
Sorry, sorry, guys, yeah, sorry, I just, I should have responded when you were talking, Paul. So, I kind of think it would be useful to, if you are aware of all of these different strands of commissioning activity across the town, to have a record of them. Because I do think this is the coordination of those local commissioning initiatives that is something that we could get involved in, either from a town council or from a local community network point of view. Because otherwise, it's going to be kind of crazy at times of really, really restricted resources for people to be duplicating things and crossing over each other and, you know, commissioning essentially the same thing when actually they could do it together. So, whatever you know, I would like to know. Thank you.
Agreed? Agreed. Any other questions, Fiona?
And I just said this, at the last meeting, we sort of began speaking about possible changes to the sort of the advisory groups and everything. Am I taking from this that we're sort of sticking with this? Is there going to be a conversation? Because obviously, Kate leaving, does that change anything? I'm just sort of curious as to what sort of happens. I'm not saying we should, I'm just sort of, I just thought we've sort of skirted it a little bit.
My, my personal feeling is that we, it would be good if we had like an emergency response team for whatever next crisis comes along. Because crises always hit the most deprived hardest. So, this group could become, rather than the anti-poverty group, or we never got round to a good name for it. But just like the idea of pivoting to whatever comes next over the horizon. And then falling back and then popping up again, falling back, popping up again. But with the chronic deprivation work ongoing.
So, the community resilience, essentially.
Okay. Any other final questions or comments, observations? Before I close the meeting, I would like to send, oh, the vote.
Vote, yeah.
Vote on agreeing the ongoing noting the progress to date and ongoing activity in the above table. Fiona? And then Mark to second, and then all those in favour. That's unanimous. And I just want to say a big thank you to our town crier, who has just resigned and has performed an amazing town crying set of duties over how many years, Paul? Seventeen years. So, I know he's not here, but hopefully he'll see this or hear this and realise that we have appreciated his every cry.